Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Monday, March 18, 2024, 10:05 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioners Mahia and Klaus by Zoom, Interim County Manager Robin Campbell, and public attendance for parts of this meeting will be available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I say "parts" because the first item on the agenda is an executive session scheduled to last approximately 30 minutes. This will be pursuant to RCW 4231101A2 to consider if in compliance with any required data security breach disclosure under RCW 19255010 and 4256590 and with legal counsel available, information regarding infrastructure and security of computer and telecommunications networks, security and service recovery plans, security risk assessments, and security test results, to the extent that they identify specific system vulnerabilities and other information that if made public may increase the risk to the confidentiality, integrity, or availability of agency security or to information technology, infrastructure, or assets. Election security will be our topic. Auditor Mary Hall and her team is here as well as some other invited county employees that would relate to this topic. So with that, we're going to close this meeting to the public and go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's eleven twenty. We are back on the record in our work session. The next topic of this morning is Thurston EDC presentation. We have Michael Cade and Jean Angel. And Jenica Machado from our economic development team. So we're just gonna turn it over to Michael.
Turn it over to Jenica and Michael.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jenica Machado, Economic Development Manager. So we're here today with Michael and Jean with the EDC and they're gonna be providing some new updates on different projects. And I had heard there's interest to hear more about opportunity zones, so they'll also be touching on that. I'll pass it over to Michael.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to chat with you this morning to talk about the work that we're doing. But hopefully it doesn't come across as only the work that we're doing, but the work that's occurring in the local economy. There's some pretty significant activities that are happening, some great successes. But there's great opportunities, opportunities of excellence that we like to call them that we need to start paying attention to. So are we gonna use our slideshow or?
It's, uh, Jenica has the mouse.
Jenica has the mouse.
She has to share the screen.
And then, so while it's getting teed up, one of the things that it looks like we have till noon, um, to chat with you, we can do this a couple ways. One is you can either stop us and we'll go in a different direction with the questions. Or you can wait till we're done. I would prefer that you don't hesitate to ask questions, because that way we can talk about it. We have a whole bunch of slides. I don't think we're gonna get through them all. We'll try to get through it quickly. I think you have them in your packet, but, um, you know, if you wanna go in a direction, don't hesitate. Let's go in that way, okay?
Okay.
Um, there's, so if you look at slide two on your packet, these are the five things that we wanted to talk to you about. One is to provide an overview of the organization. Economic development efforts in the region. Item number two is define the overall strategies of how do we build a strong local economy and equitable economy. Uh...
I couldn't see you.
Could you?
I got my contacts in today.
Yeah, we're kind of, yeah, so there's the five things we want to talk to you about is providing overarching trends and recent activities. You've got great things going on in Thurston County right now. We want to make sure that we celebrate those successes. Um, and then the last thing is problem solving. Um, really is kind of the idea is how do we look at, um, opportunities that we can impact ourselves? One of the, go ahead. Um, one of the things that I think that you probably should put in your pocket right away is the notion that economic development is not a sole organizational or individual activity. It not, uh, it, it only occurs successfully in regions that have great partnerships. Um, and I just talked a little bit about Jenica in front of her. Sorry about that, Jenica. Um, but the idea is that we have a very strong partner with Thurston County. Uh, Jenica represents your entree into our organization. Um, we like to consider that our organization is your organization. It's her economic development department and division, if you want to put it that way. So, um, we have created a, an environment for the Economic Development Council where we have a multitude of partners. Some are traditional and some are non-traditional. The partnership that we have with the county is definitely traditional in the sense that we want to focus on the recruitment of new investment in dollars. Make sure that when dollars and companies come here, they're, they know their loss, they know their resource, right? And then the last thing is we want to make sure that we're expanding those market opportunities, uh, for a variety of things. This slide here is what we like to call the four pillars of Thurston County's economy. This is not done by happenstance. This did not occur that, oh, all of a sudden we got something cool. Um, this was a strategic thing that we put into place. We, the community, put in place. Starting probably about two thousand ten, the notion that we have to have nodes of activities and efforts that act as attractors. Um, act as those things that's, that provide that stickiness that investment can go to, can swirl around, can grow, and actually attach itself to other piece of the economy. If you think about the four corners of Thurston County, um, that asks that you think about the Lacy Makerspace over in the kind of northeast corner of Thurston County. If you've not been to the new Makerspace since it's been redone, it really is world-class. Um, so opportunities for, for folks to, uh, uh, kind of develop their, their, their thing. And or become trained and or become a notion of how do you actually expand and become innovative on launching businesses.
Is the addition done?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, expansion, the remodel is done. The addition, there's another twenty thousand feet we'd like to add to that building that we don't have the funding yet. We're gonna hold off on that until that is there. But the remodel is done. The two, two and a half million dollar remodel there is done. So, and it is, it is really cool. Our next board meeting actually will be at the Makerspace this month. So you'll get a, a tour, Commissioner. If you keep going south, you have the Southwest Washington Ag Innovation Business Park, um, Tenino. Um, we've talked a lot a bit about our interest in growing the agriculture and its relationship to providing a sustainable and consistent, uh, food, uh, system and pipeline for Thurston County. But it's also the small businesses that agriculture has become that we've recognized, um, for the last fifteen years in our cluster analysis. Keep moving around. Um, northward, you'll come to the Tumwater Craft Brewing and Distilling Center. Tip of the hat to the, really the, the drivers of that, um, certainly was the Community College, but also the city of Tumw-
Okay, it's eleven twenty. We are back on the record in our work session. The next topic of this morning is Thurston EDC presentation. We have Michael Cade and Jean Angel and Jenica Machado from our economic development team. So we're just gonna turn it over to Michael.
Turn it over to Jenica and Michael.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jenica Machado, Economic Development Manager. So we're here today with Michael and Jean with the EDC, and they're gonna be providing some new updates on different projects. And I had heard there's interest to hear more about opportunity zones. So they'll also be touching on that. I'll pass it over to Michael.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to chat with you this morning and talk about the work that we're doing. But hopefully it doesn't come across as only the work that we're doing, but the work that's occurring in the local economy. There's some pretty significant activities that are happening, some great successes. But there's great opportunities, opportunities of excellence that we like to call them that we need to start paying attention to. So are we gonna use our slideshow or?
It's, uh, Jenica has the mouse.
Jenica has the mouse.
She has to share the screen.
And then, so while it's getting teed up, one of the things that, it looks like we have till noon to chat with you, we can do this a couple ways. One is you can either stop us and we'll go in a different direction with the questions, or you can wait till we're done. I would prefer that you don't hesitate to ask questions because that way we can talk about it. We have a whole bunch of slides. I don't think we're gonna get through them all. We'll try to get through it quickly. I think you have them in your packet. But, you know, if you wanna go in a direction, don't hesitate. Let's go in that way, okay?
Okay.
There's, so if you look at slide two on your packet, these are the five things that we wanted to talk to you about. One is to provide an overview of the organization, economic development efforts in the region. Item number two is define the overall strategies of how do we build a strong, local economy and equitable economy.
I couldn't see you.
Could you?
I got my contacts in today.
Yeah, we're kind of, yeah. So there's the five things we want to talk to you about is providing overarching trends and recent activities. You've got great things going on in Thurston County right now. We wanna make sure that we celebrate those successes. And then the last thing is problem solving. Really, it's kind of the idea is how do we look at opportunities that we can impact ourselves? One of the, go ahead. One of the things that I think that you probably should put in your pocket right away is the notion that economic development is not a sole organizational or individual activity. It not, it only occurs successfully in regions that have great partnerships. And I just talked a little bit about Jenica in front of her. Sorry about that, Jenica. But the idea is that we have a very strong partner with Thurston County. Jenica represents your entree into our organization. We like to consider that our organization is your organization. It's her economic development department and division, if you want to put it that way. So we have created an environment for the Economic Development Council where we have a multitude of partners. Some are traditional and some are non-traditional. The partnership that we have with the county is definitely traditional in the sense that we wanna focus on the recruitment of new investment in dollars. Make sure that when dollars and companies come here, they're, they know their loss. They know their resource, right? And then the last thing is we wanna make sure that we're expanding those market opportunities for a variety of things. This slide here is what we like to call the four pillars of Thurston County's economy. This is not done by happenstance. This did not occur that, oh, all of a sudden we got something cool. This was a strategic thing that we put into place. We, the community, put in place, starting probably about 2010. The notion that we have to have nodes of activities and efforts that act as attractors, act as those things that provide that stickiness that investment can go to, can swirl around, can grow, and actually attach itself to other piece of the economy. If you think about the four corners of Thurston County, that asks that you think about the Lacy Maker Space over in the kind of northeast corner of Thurston County. If you've not been to the new Maker Space since it's been redone, it really is world-class. Opportunities for folks to kind of develop their thing and/or become trained and/or become a notion of how do you actually expand and become innovative on launching businesses.
Is the addition done?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Expansion, the remodel is done. The addition, there's another 20,000 feet we'd like to add to that building that we don't have the funding yet. We're gonna hold off on that until that is there. But the remodel is done. Two, two and a half million dollar remodel there is done. So, and it is, it is really cool. Our next board meeting actually will be at the Maker Space this month. So you'll get a tour, Commissioner. If you keep going south, you have the Southwest Washington Ag Innovation Business Park, Tonino. We've talked a lot a bit about our interest in growing the agriculture and its relationship to providing a sustainable and consistent food system and pipeline for Thurston County. But it's also the small businesses that agriculture has become that we've recognized for the last 15 years in our cluster analysis. Keep moving around. Northward, you'll come to the Tumwater Craft Brewing and Distilling Center. Tip of the hat to the, really, the drivers of that certainly was the Community College, but also the city of Tumwater. But you think about the role that the Ag Park has with that district, grains, malts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's happening now. And then the final thing is the Armory, Arts Armory downtown, downtown Olympia. Cool stuff going on there. There is a nexus between each one of those four. Our role and resources, we wanna make sure that our partnerships realize that you enter into one, you don't just stay there. You have every opportunity to grow and expand and attach itself to. And that's how I believe we've been able to be recognized and created. A little bit about the Ag Park, as you know, we've talked a little bit about it. You've been very supportive of that. Really started, in my mind, with the notion of the South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, Steady. And the leadership coming out of Tonino, the notion that we need to support small businesses that are in the form of agriculture. Producers are growers are small businesses. We wanna recognize that and they provide a significant piece of the economy. There is a little bit of an update on kind of where we're at. First two buildings are vertical that you'll see. And the notion is that we will, the thing that I would kind of stop on a little bit is that we will move our resources into that community. One of the things that we learned is that it's nice to have a center for business innovation with some of the deepest technical assistance in Washington State. But if people can't get to it, they can't get to it, they can't use them. So let's move our resources and we'll have some staff people down there. And some of our team members will run classes and a variety of different outreach programs down there. This is kind of what it looks like. It's gone vertical. We think that we'll have some pretty significant ribbon cuttings starting in late June, July. First two buildings we occupy definitely by August. So that's very exciting. And then, you know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we... So what is going on in Thurston County? Anecdotally, I, I'm gonna get weird on you. But in 2004, I was hired by the Board of Directors and I would sit in my office and the phone wouldn't ring. And I would tell the board, we gotta get the phone ring. You know, this is, I mean, we have to become relevant to the economy. We have to become a piece of that. And we have to change our organization. And so how we did that is making sure that we're out front and talking to people about investing in the veracity of Thurston County's economy. We have to make sure that we, not only as an individual, but we create those partnerships. And some of the things that's happening on this slide is as a result of that work in that, in the last 10 years, Thurston County was one of the fastest-growing counties in the I-5 corridor. You know, I-5 corridor being Snohomish, King, Pierce, Thurston, those four counties. And then if you look at the projections that OFM provides and the TRPCL provides, we are projected to be one of the fastest-growing counties in the next 10 years. So you have a 20-year window of pretty significant economic development or pretty significant growth. Our job to make sure that we're leveraging every single opportunity to wealth create, create wealth in these communities for our businesses. Our organization does great work and throw those numbers out at you. But the point of here is that we have to be in the middle of this graph. We have to understand it and we have to understand where that growth is coming from, where it's coming, why it's coming here. And we have to make sure that this is a place that if it sticks, we want it to be successful. If it doesn't, let's help them find a spot in the region, you know, Lewis County, or maybe go down to Cowlets. But we have that opportunity now. We're decision-makers, we're drivers of that economy. 20 years ago, we weren't, we were like, okay, we'll get what we get. Uh-uh. We are now driving the economy as a partnership group. Here's our solar system. I just, I think I've talked to you about this before, but it's a little bit of a daunting thing when you talk to entrepreneurs. These are all the resources that we have for businesses. It's not important that they know what each one of these is defined as other than that we have a unique system here. And unique being a, I'm using that word very, very consciously, unique being one of a kind. You do not find this in other regions in the state. We have taken the time strategically to identify where the holes are for entrepreneurs or where they can get resources. If they need to get business coaching, we got it. If they need to get business expansion advice, they got it. If they need to get government contracts, we got it, et cetera, et cetera. So that when a business comes to us or an individual comes to us, we triage them, we kind of figure it out, and we figure out where they fit. And then we work with them to make sure that they move forward. One of the things that we'll be talking about at our next board meeting is really a focus on how we've been able to leverage this resource into the South County. Really, started Steady in 2000, I can't, I just get the number wrong. 2009, 2010, I can't remember. And the idea was that how do we collectivize and get those individuals and those entrepreneurs and these communities to start talking to each other and working? It is a phenomenal thing. And so that is part and parcel of that solar system is that we wanted to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate in the economy. One of the things that you asked us to do through our ARPA resources, dollars, is to create a, excuse me, a BIPOC Business Council. We did that. One of those things that created Myra Peña's position is that let's analyze how our resources are received and/or not being utilized by individuals. And what do we gotta, what do we have to do to make sure that they're receiving utilized? That's happening because of the solar system.
Steady not get a circle?
Not get a, it's not, go back.
How do you conceptualize that?
We're, we're not gonna reverse this, but I understand the question. Steady does get, but these are technical assistance platforms. The Steady notion right now is that it's a collective of the community. So I don't wanna make it sound like we don't recognize it. And we do, we leverage it pretty heavily and we do a lot of referrals to it. And so how it fits inside that solar system, that solar system is designed specifically about those platforms that are individualized technical assistance. So Steady is a polyglot of activities. And so that's why it's a little bit, little bit different. We have another slide that's not on this, but where Steady is in part of that platforms that we budget for. One of the concerns or one of the issues that we've, you know, candidly rustled with studies that it's hard for us to get funding. City Tonino funds it, the Chamber of Commerce there funds it. We take a little bit of the funds that you provide us as the ADO to fund it that goes into the operations. Our goal is to have it a self-sustaining, fundable, renewable funding source. And right now, that's just, it's just, it's tough to get that. Going after some grants, right now we have a grant that's outstanding that if we're successful, the USDA, that will go right into that and we'll fund that program. And so it becomes a little bit different at that time. Here's our regional economic sectors. I'm not gonna spend too much time on it. But the work that Jean is, Jean's gonna talk about in just a second is how do we know where the data leads us, right? So we know where all the data is. We know that there's a ag piece that goes right into IT Telecom. And we know that there's a connection between Administrative Professional Services and Tourism Recreation. And we know that Tourism Recreation has a piece of arts and culture. We know that now and we can track those numbers back and forth and how they get stitched together to create that ecosystem. This is something that came out of the Workforce Development Council. And I'm very proud of this slide, I tell you. Very proud of all of this. But we heard from, getting information from you all, the commission, you know, 15 years ago, that we have to know what these sectors are. So we know what the emerging, we know what the large ones are. And now we also know, you know, what the emerging ones are. Those aren't necessarily represented on this chart, but we know that something's growing and we have to pay attention to it. And we have to create resources for it.
Sorry, what's the difference between being in the circle and being on the edge of the circle?
Poor graphic designer by Michael Cade.
That's not, that doesn't mean anything.
Doesn't mean anything, yeah. I just couldn't figure out how to put Administrative Professional Services in a spot where I can still include those circles.
No, no, that's cool. I just, I understood.
It's my third grade art teacher, Mrs. Walsh would agree with you then. So, but great question. But those circles really represent core elements of that. Processors, industrial inputs, inputs and outputs, transportation, education, training. So we know what the data means for each one of those things and we know how they connect to it. Okay? Go ahead. So let's talk a little bit about opportunity zones. This is a creature that came out with the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. On an email from the Governor's Office said, please identify opportunity zones, potential opportunity zones in your Thurston, in your region. Send them to us and we'll either approve them or not approve them. We, as a council, was given that role to do that. We had to reach out to all the cities and all the county and the port and say, hey, they're based on census tracts and they're based upon kind of some notions about minimum poverty rates and things like that, low to moderate income and then household income. So we did the analysis. We sent in probably seven different opportunity, options for opportunity zones. And then the Governor's Office identified four of them for Thurston County. Four being, you'll see that kind of the middle blob. That's Lacy where my office is, kind of over by the Community College. That's historically extends up Martin Way up towards Hox Prairie. The downtown Olympia, kind of that, kind of that one in the left-hand side. The one on the right is the Nisqually Indian Tribe Reservation Plus. That's that one. And then the one on the bottom is the Grand Mound one for that census tract down there.
I think there's one commissioner district missing from the, from this.
Yep, you missed the South.
No, South is down there. Missed the north.
We had actually applied, one of the...
That one doesn't, that's not...
Yeah, we realized that what we had sent to you on Friday was missing. But the, we'll get this chart to you. We had actually applied one, applied for one in the Tonino Census Track. That would be inclusive. Because one of the reasons was we wanted the Ag Park to be there. That was not accepted by the Governor's Office. To do that, we had to go through a series of machinations. We had to write a white paper for each one of those and why it should be there.
So I really wanted us to be able to dive into the opportunity zones and like what it, what it means and what it entails in relation to the Grand Mound area because we're kind of reconceptualizing that UGA. And there's, I don't need to say all these things, you guys know all this stuff. There's, there's opportunities that we could create for specific industries. And I don't recall all the nuances of opportunity zones, but I was, I believe it had, some of them have to do with specific industries, right? And then, so should, how can we make sure that we're aligned in? Or is it even worth talking about? What is an opportunity? Yeah.
Yeah, it's, the definitions of what industries are pretty broadly defined. Tell you the truth, they're pretty broadly defined. And you could probably pretty much scoot anything you want into that definition. Commercial, industrial, residential. What doesn't fit in there? It's pretty hard to get something that doesn't fit in there. So it's pretty broad as far as the categories of activities. Candidly, I haven't had somebody come to me in the last four years to talk about opportunity zones. They've been fairly successful.
It was hidden away somewhere in here.
What's that?
And it was hidden away somewhere in here and I remembered you talking about it.
Yeah, we were actually bitterly disappointed that the opportunity zone that we had submitted for the kind of Tonino, the Ag Park, we thought, man, this is perfect. This is what it's there for, was denied by the governor. And I'm not pushing on the governor, it's just I'm sure there was a process they undertook. But that was not accepted.
Remind us what you get? Like, why, why are you trying to get these opportunity zones? What will we get out of it?
Yeah, it allows for the creation of an opportunity zone fund. So somebody like me, well, not me, but if I wanted to have a series of capital gains that I want to receive a benefit of either a tax benefit of either...
Some private developer.
Yes. It's private funds that either defer my capital gains tax on this chunk of money and/or alleviate that capital gains tax. I could invest in a fund that would go to fund a project within that opportunity zone. And if it sticks in that, in that project for five years, there's like a 15% reduction on your capital gains tax. If it's there for, was it eight to 10 years, you get actually a 50% reduction on your capital gains tax bill. And if you put money in there and you, your investment increases, you do not pay capital gains on that increase of value of that, your portion of the fund. So it was fairly attractive for high-value investors that wanted to put money into a spot where they could essentially put it to work, increase their own wealth and not be taxed capital gains on it. So after the project, after 20 years, they took it out, that was tax-free. Capital gains tax-free, there were some other taxes, but capital gains would not be taxed. So a couple of projects in Thurston County. There's a building going up downtown Olympia. That was the one, I can never remember what was, that's an opportunity zone fund. That was the building that burnt a couple of years ago, it was arson. Well, that was an opportunity zone fund. And there was another project in downtown Olympia, a small one, that was an opportunity zone fund. We had a proposed one at the Lacy Opportunity Zone Fund that potentially it has not come to fruition. I don't know if it's gonna happen. But essentially the timeline is running out now. The sunset is 2027. Those funds essentially need to be booked in. I don't know if it'll be, Congress will have to extend it out another 10, 20 years. I don't know if that's gonna happen. Again, that was the prior administration, so you just never know how those things happen. We actually were very aggressive in creating a private for-profit company called Ozzy. And we had created this and stood it up. Actually, the Economic Development Council paid for in part of our budget to do that legal work so we can actually launch a business. And their idea was to kind of manage those and recruit those opportunity funds. And that's essentially what happened downtown, downtown Olympia was part of that. That organization, that effort is kind of holding off on that activities because the churn or the rush, so to speak, into that projects, into those projects, those funds has slowed way down. Where we found it was very successful in Washington State is if you have an opportunity zone fund that was adjacent to a very urbanized area. Downtown Tacoma has got several of them. They've been very successful because it's right next to a very active urban environment. We have found that they have communities like Tacoma, Seattle, Spokane. Vancouver has got one that is very active. Bremerton, redevelopment of the, redevelopment of the downtown along the waterfront, that was all done with an opportunity zone fund. As it relates to Grand Mound, I think that you're very sage in the notion of we have to pay attention to it. And we, we, as an Economic Development Council, need to start thinking in terms, if nobody knocks on my door after four years or three years, I kind of keep, I kind of, kind of, I don't necessarily move away from it, I just kind of forget about it. So I think we need to think about it as we look at that Grand Mound and look at the timeline of realities. I think it's time for us to reengage the non, the organization that we helped stand up to see if there's an interest there to help participate in that. So good question, good direction on our part to do that, so.
How about down at Old Brewery site? I see it's in, in the opportunity zone. It's gonna get...
It's not in an opportunity.
It's not?
No, no, no. We had approached the leadership. They chose not to have that opportunity. What you might consider there in the brewery is...
The old brewery I'm talking about, the old, old one?
Yeah, it's not part of that census tract.
It's not?
It's, it just, it's next to it. It's the census tract next to it, it's the... There's another program and I'll think about it before the end of it. I guarantee you I'm gonna just blurt it out in about 10 minutes. But essentially it's, opportunity zones took the place of that investment that still exists, that's in the federal registry. What is it called? I'll think of it. Give me some grace on this one. But some of our leadership, well, let's focus on that other thing. And so, they have, so it's not part of that opportunity zone.
Craft Brewing Distilling District type stuff, is that what you're talking about?
That's not in there either then.
Let's move on. Sorry about that. I got a hitch in my giddyup. So, but the opportunity zones are still there. It's still an opportunity, still a reality. And so I think that as we kind of continue that, that process of discussing what's going on in the Grand Mound area.
But you're saying that, were you saying that the sunset of 2027, is that for all opportunity zones, like the federal authorizing statute needs to be re-upped or else that this whole concept will evaporate?
As my understanding is it this morning, yeah. We're running out of time, so I'm gonna keep going. I want Jean to talk a little bit about kind of some of the data pieces of your economic ecosystem, what's going on there. The slide here is the Economic Development District. We briefed you on that, that's moving forward. We're working with the three other Economic Development Councils to create that, create the legal... the legal component of that. We believe this will be live by July of this year, late June, July. What I mean by that is we'll have a board of directors establish, some bylaws, we do have a budget, we've got my board to cede that with some budget so we can do that. We'll hire a, a director of the Economic Development District and we'll move on. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. And then, so let's, Gene, I want you to start talking, I think this is from, from me to you now.
Yeah, so, you know, for the last four years as the Director of Research and Evaluation, I've had the distinct pleasure of evaluating the outcomes of all of the programs that we've run at the Thurston Economic Development Council. And as a part of that, I always calculate a multiplier effect. And this year, our multiplier effect was pretty outstanding, I mean truly outstanding. For every dollar that we administered at the Thurston EDC, we've returned $48 in economic output back to the county. I challenge you to find another economic multiplier that looks anything like that. You know, typically when I see economic multipliers, I see people really celebrating multipliers of five, six, seven, 48. It's a big deal, it's a big deal and we should pay attention to that. And we are certainly celebrating that at the Economic Development Council, we don't see multipliers like this high that often. So it's a cool thing, it's a cool thing and it's certainly a regional partnership and it's certainly due to the partnership that we have here with Thurston County. So thank you, seriously, thank you. $48, every dollar, $48.
Every dollar of what?
Every dollar that we administrate and our organization returns back to the community as $48 in economic output. So in that line, anytime we do impact analysis, anytime I do impact analysis, I always sort of organize myself around the question, what will we be giving up if this organization activity didn't exist, didn't exist? So here's what we'd be giving up if the EDC here did not exist. Well, first of all, our, our total number of interactions from 2023, this is a super easy one, 2,323, so in 23, we did 2323. You're never going to forget that now, right? But of those interactions with businesses, we had 520 interactions that were with BIPOC-owned businesses, 100 and, or 821 with women-owned businesses and 189 from veteran-owned businesses. We're super proud of that. You know, we serve really a very diverse crowd of individuals. Through the various programs that we've stood up, we've really targeted a lot of different demographics, we're super proud of that. You know, I just, we, we have been, I think, ahead of the game when it comes to measuring these types of things. So it's a value that we've instilled in our organization, we've been tracking this for years now. So it is super important to us and, you know, I can go back several years if you have any interest in that. Total economic output throughout the years. So the last year that we measured, 2022, we did over $475.8 million in total economic impact for the county. That's across all of our recruitment expansion efforts, across all of our programming efforts. So that's a big sum total number of all of our activities, we're very proud of that. And as you can see, it's a significant year for us. I might need a little bit of help getting back, there we are. I accidentally created a link, I think. I might need an arrow key to move us forward.
Can you scroll it down?
Can I give this to you?
Slide 17.
Over there. Thank you. I, I seem to, maybe, it might be linking to my actual data tables, so I may need some keyboard help here. Okay, so, and, let's see, where are we? I think we skipped one, we skipped a few, so if we could go back just a couple, a couple slides.
So we do only have about eight minutes left.
Thank you.
I, I might just point out, if, if there were page numbers on here, it'd be easier to click through. That's just a bugaboo line, so.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, so we'll scream through this really quickly. So that 400-plus million dollars, that's 1,442 jobs either created or retained for this, this community, that's huge, right? That, that's a huge thing, everyone sort of understands the personal relationship that you have with a job, life-changing stuff, right? So, total labor income impact, 109 million dollars. And then, like I said before, that multiplier effect, for every $1, we return 48 back. Okay, so I don't know about you, but COVID kind of broke my brain and I just gave a million bad information data presentations and with your generosity and permission, I'm just not going to do it anymore. So I'm going to present some good information for you. Something to be happy about here, okay, well, two different research institutions from opposite sides of the country both identified the Olympia-Tom water Lacey MSA as a really significant economy. So the Milken Institute, they identified us as the ninth best economy overall, there's a bunch of different metrics that go into this, a bunch of different economic health metrics that go into this, it's not just line what up the best, right? It's a bunch of different kinds of things. So it is a holistic view, they identified us as the ninth best economy and the fourth best in income equality, 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 not inequality.
Ninth best in the state?
Fourth, fourth best in the nation. So of all MSAs in the nation, we perform at this level. So think about the kinds of cities that we're being compared to, Boston, New York, Dallas, San Francisco, tier-one cities. By the way, we're a tier-one city now, they've identified us as a tier-one community. That's huge, we should celebrate that, that's a positive thing. And it hasn't come at the cost of sort of social inequity, right? We've sort of stayed at that place where we're recognized as the fourth in income equality. Trimmer Analytics, they're on the other side of the country, they ranked us as the second-best economy and first in the nation for high-tech job growth. I have those numbers, we can talk about that, I can send those emails to you. Significant, significant. It's okay, we can be proud, we can celebrate for a minute, there's enough problems in the world.
Bring any champagne?
I didn't bring any champagne, no, I, I didn't, that, that, that's a good idea though. It's okay to celebrate our success and we've had some success. I know often we see only problems in the world, there's some good stuff too, we're experiencing it right now. This is our Economic Vitality Index, it's a partnership that we have with Dr. Raleigh Moore over at St. Martin's, the economist there. You know, I see this graph and I have a lot of feelings, I'm sure you have a lot of feelings. The one thing that I would say is that, you know, we did it. COVID is still real, it impacted a lot of people, myself included, but when you look at the economic metrics, what we see is a relatively robust and healthy recovery, significantly different from the 2008 recession, significantly different. Part of that's the additional capacity that we had as a community, the partnerships that we had as a community in place there and partly because COVID didn't impact us as much as some other MSAs across the nation. But, yeah, I think there's something to be happy about there, there's something to be happy about in this graph.
What does MSA stand for?
Metropolitan Statistical Area.
Metropolitan Statistical Area.
I'll skip through this, we don't have too much time, but this is a survey that we do put out to the business community. A, a, a number of 50 is a generally positive outlook, a number of below 50, maybe a generally pessimistic outlook, so we're kind of sort of right on the edge of pessimism in the business community.
All over the place though, is it like a small data sample or?
So there's a few hundred that go into this. What we have found actually is that the, these spikes, apologies tend to correspond more directly to whether or not it's an election year. So we noticed that there is a general pessimism that sort of crawls through the community, especially around federal elections, state elections, so it is what it is, there's certainly a role that media plays. You know, what we do find is that the more knowledge that the business owner has around the question that's being asked, the more optimistic they are. That is to say, if we're asking them about manufacturing and they work in manufacturing, they seem to be more optimistic about manufacturing than the, the economy as a whole. So we do tend to see that there is a positive correlation between optimism and how much knowledge you actually have about what you're talking about. I think we all can kind of relate to that. This year, market growth is really the reason why people expect profits to be increasing. In the past, we've seen price increases have that number one spot, so it's good to see market demand growth back there. Every jurisdiction since 2008 has gone up in taxable retail sales, this comes from TRPC, that tells us something about consumer demand, consumer sentiment, tells us something about budgets for the future, a generally positive outlook there. Here's unemployment, we're at historic lows, it's clicked up a little bit since then, since this graph, we're at about 4.7 now, but we've really been in a historic place, truly, truly a historic place. And right now, we're just basically back where we were before the pandemic happened. So we've clicked up a little bit, but it's nothing to be concerned about and really sort of back to our baseline before we're, before where COVID was. Okay, our major industrial employment, you can see public administration is at the top, no surprises there, but the thing that I would say is that that's not the whole story. The largest amount of opportunity really is in the private sector. Michael's been here for quite a long time doing this diversification work, this is the success story. You know, Michael has communicated to me many, many times that these were inverted when he first started here. So the diversi, the diversification effort has been significant here, it's been a success story, right? And certainly that public sector employment provides that floor of employment that we're not, we're not going to sink below. So we're super blessed to have public sector employment, but it's not the whole story. So we really shouldn't think of it as the whole story these days, we're really a private sector town now.
You showed that slide of number one in high-tech job growth, what is that extending from? Can we, if somebody asked me, what can I point to?
So I, I have some numbers on that, it really is around software publishing, data processing and some high-skill technical consulting categories, that, I mean, the number is, the percentage growths are huge, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of percent growth in those sectors, statistical anomaly, a little bit, small number, grows a lot, and it's a high percentage growth. So I think that there is a little bit of a statistical anomaly that's happening there in the way that they're weighting those categories, but I'm happy to send that over to you so you have that on the end.
I would also say though, that even though there's high job growth and that's great, it's a very small sector in Thurston County.
Exactly, right, exactly.
I think that's what you're saying.
Correct.
That small data set.
Correct.
Five new people.
Yeah, but it's, it's more significant than five, but it is, it is a smaller number, yeah.
And those are the things that we want to make sure that we understand, so we can kind of help them incubate and grow here.
Sure.
Yeah, you bet.
You know, a, a lot of people say, well, hey, we don't benefit from a major employer, yeah, we do, it's called JBLM. We conducted an impact assessment here at our office in partnership with University of Washington Tacoma and we found that actually about 18%, just about one in five jobs in Thurston County are directly attributable to the exist, in the existence of that base. You get the JBLM impacts, you get the public sector impacts, all of a sudden you have a pretty robust foundation to build on. And I think that's really what goes into that, those rankings, right? Last thing, housing affordability, okay, so that line there, that's the parity line, if the price of housing and the average salary, salary were in parity, we would see these graphs up at that dotted dash line there. We don't, they're crashing, plummeting in fact, I would say. I would just remind you that the gap between that parity line and where we are now, if you don't own a home, that's what we call true despair, true despair. If you want students to stay here, if you want adult children to stay here, got to fix this, got to fix this, number one problem, this and childcare, got to fix this one. Okay, that's the end.
So what do you think, inflation, interest rate, what do you think that?
Demand?
Supply.
Supply?
Great place to live with lots of opportunity, low supply of housing.
You got it, you got it. Anything we can do to increase supply has to be done.
Stop making it a nice place to live. Don't worry about it all wrong.
Yeah, right, right. And seriously, anything that we can do, all strategies are on the table, all income, all housing income levels are needed.
Okay, thank you. So we're at noon, are there any commissioner questions? Pipe up if you're on Zoom, can't see you.
No questions from you, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Can you hit stop share?
Yeah, that was really good information, thank you. Stop the share, commissioner cloud, so, okay. So it is noon, we're back at two, I want to say, commissioner check-in, we can pick up commissioner items then, so we're at the end of the agenda for this morning and we are going, is there anything in Michael you needed to hit before we go?
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.